So I'll bring this meeting to order on Tuesday, December 17th at 5:02 PM. Monica, can I get a roll call, please?
Ms. Martinez?
Oh, I'm sorry. Here. Here. Here.
Here.
So we need to approve the minutes of the November 12th, 2019 meeting. Can I get a motion for the approval?
I'll motion to approve the minutes for November 12th, 2019 as presented.
Can I get a second, please? A second. Roll call, Monica?
Aye.
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 So this evening, there is a need to amend the agenda to remove items 3.1 and 4.1 from the agenda. Can I get a motion to remove those from the agenda? To amend the agenda?
Motion to amend the agenda.
Second? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, Monica?
Aye.
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 And we need a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Can I get a motion for that, please?
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Monica, roll call.
Aye.
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 So now, we're going to move into the superintendent's report. So Superintendent Rangel, you're on.
Tonight, we are going to have our financial department, led by Shay Martinez, our chief financial officer, discuss the comprehensive annual financial report, or we refer to that as the CAFR, which will also include a report from our auditor. And Eddie Edward, it's hard for me not to call you Eddie, but Edward Storz, our financial officer as well, will also, our budget director, will also be here to answer questions if need be. And so I'm going to turn the program over to you, Shay, and have you walk us through this information.
Good evening, Board President, members of the board, and Superintendent Rangel. Tonight, we will be presenting the results of our annual financial audit. This audit covers the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2018, and ending June 30th, 2019. We will begin with a report from Allison Stife, who is a CPA at our external auditor, Clifton Larson Allen. And after Allison has completed her report, I'll be giving the board an overview of the fiscal year 2018-19 financials and some ideas of where to start the budget conversations for fiscal year 2021. At any time during either presentation, feel free to ask questions of either Allison or myself, or Eddie, if appropriate. So.
Thank you so much, Shay. Good evening, everyone. Appreciate the opportunity to present tonight. We do have this PowerPoint, as you can see in front of you, to cover the highlights. There's some other items that were in your board packets that I'll refer to, that you should have access to electronically. There's also a letter that I did pass out that is on CLA Letterhead that we'll cover as well during the presentation. So as Shay said, this is a presentation over the comprehensive annual financial report, or CAFR for short as the acronym, as well as the single audit. Because the district is a recipient of federal funding, there is a certain type of audit that has to occur on top of the normal financial statement audit over federal funding. So we'll talk about the results of that audit as part of this presentation, too. But I did want to just distinguish the financial report, the CAFR, versus the single audit. So here are just a few items. We will talk about main responsibilities related to generally accounting, generally accepted auditing standards, as well as the scope of the audit, what we covered during our audit procedures. And then we'll talk about the results of the audit. So findings, recommendations, as well as required communications that we had, that we are required to have with you all as board members, because us as CLA, as the external auditors, are directly engaged to perform the audit with the boards. That's why there's certain communications that we need to have with you all that we'll have during this conversation. So here's a summary of the different responsibilities that we are engaged to perform during the audit related to generally accepted auditing standards, which is the normal auditing standards that are reported for an entity such as the district. So we do express opinions over the financial statements to make sure that they're in conformity with those different accounting standards. We do only audit certain aspects of that comprehensive annual financial report. Some of those items in there are unaudited. We'll cover that in a little bit later. We do, again, perform the audit in accordance with required auditing standards. And then we are required to communicate any sort of significant matters during the audit, any information that we came about from a finding or recommendation standpoint as well. So one key thing to note here, as that pops up there, is that an audit cannot be an internal control of the district. So it's very important that management does take ultimate responsibility for the financial statements. So that's really what this bullet point is here, this first one, is that an audit does not relieve management of its responsibilities to manage the actual district. We do review internal controls as part of our testing, but we're not actually issuing an opinion over those. That would be a different sort of specific audit that we're not engaged to do. And then we are reviewing the audit in terms of those governmental accounting standards. So there's different things that we have to review because you all are a government entity. All right, so scope of the audit, I kind of touched on this, but just to highlight that again, is the main financial statement audit. And then we do have the single audit that we performed. And this is where we have to do detailed testing of certain federal programs every year based on a rotation basis. So basically, the largest federal grants that the district receives have to be audited every third year. So in this case, Impact Aid was the program that we did audit this year. And in terms of total federal expenditures for fiscal year 1819, it was about $3 million of a total of about 11.5 million of total federal expenditures that the district did have this year. There's certain coverage that we have to attain. It's either 20% or 40% of that total dollar amount. So we got to that certain percentage of 3 million with that program. So now, we're going to kind of cover some of the highlights of the audit process, findings that we had, recommendations that we did have, and then some of those required communications as well. So findings, just to talk about what that really means, because it can be a little bit of a scary word, I would say, but let's break it down kind of to what that definition is, and then kind of talk about levels of findings that we have as a result of an audit. So here, you can see that an audit finding is really defined as an area of potential control weakness, a policy violation, or noncompliance with certain terms or conditions of an award, or some sort of contract during the audit. Findings and what that terminology, it would either be called a significant deficiency or a material weakness. The worst-case or most severe type of finding would be a material weakness, which means it's a very severe type of issue that we noted. The next step down with there is still a big enough issue that we have to report, but it is a step down. That would be a significant deficiency. And then lower than that, the least severe, if you will, would be the word, would be an internal control item that we might note. So deficiency in internal control or best practice recommendation. And that doesn't, that's not reported as part of the ultimate CAFR deliverable, the big financial statement package that you do see. And I think we have a slide on here. Let me skip ahead to that. So significant deficiencies and material weaknesses are reported within that CAFR package. Like I mentioned, the schedule of findings or question costs. Any sort of items that are best practice recommendations, deficiencies in internal control are reported in a management letter that just goes to governance, the board, and management. So that's not necessarily public within your financial statement package. All right, so just to give a little background, that's kind of the types of findings. So now, we'll jump into the actual results for this year, for the fiscal year 19 audit. So there's two different types of findings that we have to report on. One would be related to the financial statements, and then the other would be related to the major programs that we test related to federal expenditures. So we're happy to report that there were no financial statement findings this year. And that is reported in the back of the CAFR document, the schedule of finding question costs, if you happen to have that handy. It's way in the back, PDF page 118. But I'll summarize the highlights if you don't have it in front of you. So no financial statement findings, like I said. We did have one significant deficiency related to testing of the Impact Aid program, and that's related to that major federal program, like I mentioned, where it's a very detailed dive of certain federal requirements. There's a slew of requirements the district does have to follow. And really, if we find any exceptions to that, you have to report a finding. So it's a really tough area in terms of the federal reporting and federal requirements that we do test for. So no material weaknesses, but we did have a significant deficiency related to Impact Aid. And specifically, what that requirement was, was there's several different types of areas that we test for, things like allowable costs. So making sure that things that are being charged to the grant are allowable and okay to be charged under the grant. Things like reporting requirements are different areas. Another area is a special test or provision. So again, this is what the federal requirement is related to wage rate requirements. So long story short, the way the finding kind of words is that under this program, if there's any sort of expenditures that are charged under this program that relate to construction, there's certain tracking that you have to do related to wage rate requirements. So in this case, we noted that the Impact Aid money is tracked within the general fund for the district versus tracked separately. And once it kind of gets put into the general fund monies, it can be spent on a lot of different things. But if it is spent on construction specifically, there's these certain tracking requirements that you have to go through. So we noted that it was hard to distinguish what those monies were actually spent on, and if they were actually spent on construction. So it's really getting at an internal control tracking issue that we noted. We did not note any question costs, saying, hey, you know, there was all this money that was misspent. We did not note any items like that. But it's really getting at, and the finding has a lot more detail and context on this, but it's getting at just tracking those monies separately from an expenditure standpoint so that you can see that trail of what it's spent on, to see that it was not spent on construction. And as part of the deliverable package, the district does have to comment on the finding and provide a corrective action plan. And so that's attached within that document as well, for your reference. It talks about how the district plans to address that finding. Any questions on that before I continue? All right. One other area is that we do have to report on the status of findings each year related to prior year. So the feds do require reporting to see if findings are corrected, or if there's some items that still need to be remedied as a result. So in the prior year audit, we did have two findings related to the financial statements. And in this fiscal year 19, we did not have to repeat those findings, meaning we didn't have to show them as a significant deficiency. One of the findings related to the journal entry process was reduced to a lesser type of issue, because the district has taken great strides to address that, but that is an ongoing item that they are addressing. So it's not reported in that public document anymore. It is reported separately in a management letter comment, like I mentioned. And then the second finding that we had in the prior year was corrected appropriately and not needed to be repeated. All right. And so that was really the summary of those findings that are either a material weakness or significant deficiency. No material weaknesses, one significant deficiency this year. We did have several management letter comments, which really fall into the least severe bucket of best practice type recommendations. So things that we might see at other districts, or other governments, or other items that weren't to the level of a finding. So this is in a separate letter that was provided in your board packet in great length as far as the context related to that. But just to try to quickly summarize that for the benefit of this meeting, one of them related to a capitalization policy, basically capital assets or fixed assets. So things like buildings and equipment here, things like that, that reach a certain threshold, have to be depreciated over its useful life. So it might be a building might have a useful life of 50 years. IT equipment might have a useful life of five years. That's just an example to try to summarize what capitalization means in terms of a government and treatment of that for an accounting perspective. So the specific recommendation that we did have related to policies for improving on policies related to significant building or roof repairs, just tightening up that policy so that it's more clear for treatment of how those should be depreciated, how those should be capitalized at the district. So again, just a best practice recommendation there. Another item here, this grant-related activity is kind of a larger bucket of adjustments that we had during the year. So when we go through our audit test work, there's certain items that we might discuss with management that might need to be corrected so that things can be properly presented. So there was a couple of different issues, and I'll cover that in the letter that you all have in a second here. But that's really what this grant activity summary related to in the separate letter is just talking about what those adjustments were. So I'll cover that in one minute here. This other cash and payroll liabilities, very similarly, those related to correcting journal entries that management did correct during the year, related to certain recording of cash and liabilities. And then journal entries was one additional area. That was the reference that I made before, that the district is continuing to improve on the journal entry process. But it was reduced in terms of the level of severity from the prior year. And then the last category here is related to a series of recommendations related to information technology. So IT, we did have an IT expert from our firm come in a few years ago, and really did a deep dive in terms of overall areas of IT, planning, user access, segregation duties. The list here is on the slide. So these are recommendations that are repeated from the prior year that the district is continuing to work on, and they're summarized within that separate letter as well. But like I said, strategic planning, user access, so who has access to what from an IT perspective, disaster recovery planning, terminated users. All right. Any questions? Or good to keep going? Okay. So related to the financial statements, and Shay will cover these in greater detail. Really, the biggest piece that I wanted to mention is the actual audit opinion, which is towards the front of the actual CAFR document. And that is, we're happy to report this year was an unmodified or clean opinion, which is the best opinion that the district can get over the financial statements. So that's, again, a kudos to the hard work that district management and staff go through. So did want to just point that out, that that's part of the CAFR independent auditors report is what that's referred to as. All right, and the last section here is the required communications that we do need to go through with you all. This is the separate letter that you should have in front of you that is on CLA Letterhead, addressed to the board. So like I said, we are directly engaged with the board to perform the audit. So this is kind of a summary audit playbook, if you will, of what happened during the year, any big changes, items of note. So just covering some of the highlights here within this letter, there were no new accounting policies of note during the year. We would have to disclose those if there were. Accounting estimates is another big area of focus of the financial statements. So there are several numbers that do, that are estimates. So things like the useful life of a building or equipment, for example, is a big estimate that the district has to reevaluate every year. Another estimate is the net pension liability related to the district's participation in para, and Shay will talk about that in greater detail. But this is really just to let you know that there are, there's an estimate process that goes through. We do review it for reasonableness, but knowing that that is revisited every year because it is an estimate. Going on page two here, if you're following along in that letter, there, we do have to report if there was any sort of difficulties encountered in the audit, and we're happy to report quite to the contrary. There was no difficulties in performing the audit. Management and staff are very helpful in providing requests and explanations and getting us all to the end goal of being able to issue the reports and deliverables. So again, appreciation to management for working with us in that process. Two other items that we do have to report on is if we did have any audit adjustments, which would basically mean we identified certain account balances that needed to be corrected so that the financial statements could be correct. And that is attached within your document. They're labeled as corrected misstatements. So basically, they were the amounts that were corrected by management, reflected in the financial statements that you see in front of you, and were agreed upon by management. The other level, the word is uncorrected misstatement or past adjustment, means there are certain items that we identified during our procedures, but items that weren't big enough to distort the financial statements. So those are items that, after looking at them in aggregate, we talked to management about and didn't need to actually record those in the current year as presented. Most of those relate to timing issues from year to year, and that do kind of true itself up as things progress into the future. But those are items that aren't materially distorting the financial statements. So that's really the biggest things in terms of this letter. The other attachments within here, just to briefly mention, is the summary of uncorrected misstatements. So those were the items that we identified during the audit process that weren't big enough to distort those numbers. So I just mentioned those, really related to recording of accounts receivable and revenues as of the end of the fiscal year. And then the other attachment that's labeled adjusting journal entries report is the listing of audit adjustments that were big enough that needed to be corrected in the financial statements, and they were corrected in the financials. Really, the first, one, two, three, four, five, six journal entries listed all relate to the same issue, which was basically just a timing, a cash timing issue where something should have, had originally been a reduction to cash, but it should have been recorded as a liability because it hadn't actually cleared the bank yet. So that was just a reclassification in the balance sheet from basically an asset to a liability. And then the last entry that was listed here related to an accrual, so in accounts payable that needed to be corrected. And again, these were all corrected by management. The last item that's attached to this letter is the management representation letter, which is a letter that we get signed from management representing themselves to us, letting us know that they let us know about any litigation going on, that they gave us access to board minutes to review, that they told us about any, you know, kind of different things that were happening in the district. So it's a long laundry list of items that the district does provide to us in a signed letter before we can issue our audit. So that was really a summary of that required communications. I'm happy to address any questions that you all have, or anything else, before Shay covers more of the financial information.
Any questions?
No? Okay. Well, thank you so much for your time. And I'll still be here if there's any other questions.
Thank you, Allison. Are you getting the PowerPoint, Monica?
Do you do it from memory?
Yes, I, yeah. Okay, ready? I'd first like to acknowledge the excellent work of the finance team for the successful completion of this year's CAFR. Our Director of Finance, Eddie Storz, showed exceptional leadership throughout the absence of a CFO and a COO. The audit provides us with an opportunity to find improvements in our internal controls and processes, and we're committed as a staff to ensure that the district is as protected as possible, while also committing to finding efficiencies in our processes to expedite getting resources to our schools and students. So a brief overview of the local economic condition. The December forecast from the Office of State Budgeting and Legislative Council is due to come out this Friday, so I don't have any updated information other than what the governor's projected budget as of November 1st has indicated. In Adams County, unemployment increased slightly to 4.1% at the end of 2018, and the population grew by 1.7%. The school district, however, continues to experiencing declining enrollment. There are several factors responsible for this decline, declining birth rates, especially during the recession, and a high cost of living here in the metro area has caused many of our families to move to less expensive areas of the state. We also are experiencing some loss due to frustrated parents and a negative narrative from the press around Adams 14. Community engagement and building trust in our amazing community is a priority that helps us change that narrative. However, declining enrollment is a nationwide issue. It is likely that we will seek long-term solutions to address this. Inflation in the Denver-Ara-Lakewood metro area is between 1.8 and 1.9%, which is markedly lower than the last few years. As high as they are, many of the housing costs have leveled, which is a large driver of higher inflation in recent years. Forgetting I have this. Let's review actual revenue and expenditures for the district in fiscal year 1819. Total general fund revenues increased by 3.4 million or 4.9% over the previous fiscal year. The total revenues collected for fiscal year 19 were $73,960,526 before transfers to other funds. Local property taxes were flat to slightly lower than 2017. The majority of the revenue increase was at the state level, where the district recognized an additional $1.8 million in per pupil revenue. This chart helps to illustrate the breakdown of where our funding comes from. The majority is from state equalization, which is the amount the state backfills to ensure that we are collecting the per pupil amount guaranteed to us in the Public School Finance Act. Local taxes are the amount we receive from our local taxpayers and are prescribed by CDE based on current assessed valuation. The remaining comes from state categoricals, in the state category, excuse me. The federal amount consists of federal Impact Aid, which is given to us based on the Rocky Mountain Arsenal land, which is ineligible for taxation. Total expenditures increased by $6,86,060,000 or 9.6% over fiscal year 18. The majority of this increase was attributed to salary and benefit increases for staff, and additional funds contributed to para. As you can see on this chart, the largest portion of our expenditures are related to direct instruction. School administration and operations and maintenance are the next largest percentages. Just to note, pupil services and instructional staff directly support students as well and support services for students. When compiling the budget, there are many assumptions that have to be made. Many times, the legislation does not pass the Finance Act until the budget has been almost finalized. This is one reason that our state revenue was higher than projected last year. The final Finance Act was more robust than originally projected. Because of the additional revenue received, the projected change in fund balance was lower than expected, meaning we started the year with more resources than originally budgeted. This was reflected in the beginning fund balance. This slide summarizes the district's current long-term obligations. In March of 2013, the district issued $62,245,000 of general obligation refunding bonds. This was, in essence, a refinance of the 2006 bonds, which carried a lower interest rate. In April of 2015, the district issued $11,590,000 of GO refunding bonds to refinance the 2007 GO bond and a portion of the 2006 COPs. In December of 2018, in order to secure the $19 million of best matching funds, the district issued $6,729,407 of best matching money certificates of participation. This was for the new Alsup Elementary. When the bond is sold at a premium, the amount of the premium is listed as a long-term obligation and adjusted each year by the amount of interest paid. So you'll see that on this list where it says bond premiums. $1,872,744 is the estimated liability for the district's compensated absences. This is related to the leave that has been accrued by employees but not yet used. The district also retains a liability of $418,646 for the early retirement of eligible teachers. $547,370 of this amount is for capital leases, which include white fleet vehicles and yellow buses. The remaining liability is recognized only in the government-wide financial statements as a result of GASB 68 and 75. This is the This is the district's proportionate share of the unfunded para liability and other post-employment benefits other than pensions. This was a new reporting requirement added about four years ago and represents the estimated amount of retiree obligations based on actuarial assumptions and also assumes certain return and participation rates. It is not actually a payable on the government level. So when calculating our legal debt margin, which is always a good idea to have in mind, our total net bonded debt applicable to the limit is $63,720,822. There are two ways that we assess the legal debt limit. One is by using 6% of the actual value of the property in the district or 20% of the assessed value. And if there were ever an election, you would have to actually declare that on the ballot, which one you were using for the valuation. So the debt limit on the actual value would be $243,303,761, or if using the assessed would be $146,725,510. The legal debt margin is that amount minus the current debt that we have, which you can see on the slide here. Right now, our current debt margin is 43.43% of the assessed limit and 14% of the actual limit. Bonding capacity would be an additional $115 million if actual value was used, or $83 million if assessed value was used based on 2019 values. The December valuation for 2020 shows an increase in assessed valuation of $137,520,480. The last few slides gave us an idea of our starting point for the...
Just hold on a second.
Sure.
One of the things that I would like us to do is get this, I'll get this PowerPoint to our board just so, because it's hard to take that many notes.
I'm sorry, yeah.
So we'll make, just make sure they get a copy. You sent me one, so I will make sure that...
Sure. I apologize. In Mableton, we...
They have it in Atlanta.
We do have it. Oh, you do? Well, they had the computers, so...
A printed one would be awesome.
No problem. So this gives us an idea of our starting point for the next fiscal year and beyond. The pupil count for fiscal year 2020, which was taken in October, has decreased by 154.7 FTE. That's with five-year averaging. So the state does do an average of our five years to kind of cushion the blow if you're in a declining enrollment. We are initially projected a decrease of 226 FTE for fiscal year 21. I will, however, say that we are doing some more analysis on that and looking, hope we're going to find a little bit rosier picture. Assuming a per pupil increase in total program of $178 a pupil, this would be a loss of This chart illustrates the eight-year history of funded enrollment in the district. When the district starts declining in enrollment, like I said, the five-year averaging for funding is to cushion the loss of revenue. So you can see here, we were gradually growing, and then we grew pretty steeply. The averaging began when we dropped just by 20 FTE in, let me slide, 2016. So we've been on averaging ever since then, but our largest decline that we've seen was this year, 322 FTE. Will only absorb some of that because of averaging. It's difficult to predict the level of pupil enrollment decline that the district may experience. Several variables could skew the outcome. The state funding of full-day preschool had an interesting effect on the district. We were utilizing eCare slots that are awarded within that CPP to help fund the full-day kindergarten that now is funded by the state. However, those slots now, this district is one of the only districts that actually lost money because the eCare used to supplement the .58. And now we're getting full funding for kindergarten, but we don't have the slots in CPP. So the enrollment in preschool took a big hit. However, student achievement increase in community trust could result in retention of students. The new ALCUP could also attract more students to the district. Marketing efforts by neighboring districts could possibly further reduce enrollment, but hopefully we can counteract that with our own marketing efforts. And KIP charter is something that we need to keep on our radar. If they successfully are able to enter the district, likely would take neighborhood students out of our enrollment. We'll begin to plan and assess possible scenarios as well as a deeper analysis of cohorts moving The preliminary budget from the governor's office includes an additional, it includes an additional $208. I am forecasting an additional drop in at-risk pupil count, so 178 is what we're currently using as the estimate. I think when the December forecast comes out, we might see that there's some either negative or positive changes in the funding. The conversations, some of the conversations include for 2021, what the board prioritizes, the DAC prioritizes, and our consultants as budget priorities, recruitment and retention of quality staff. We already do know that we're going to have increased benefit costs. We already do know that we have increased para contributions. We are pretty certain we're going to have declining enrollment, at least for this next year, what our investments are in turnaround strategies, and also addressing any capital So finally done with that presentation. There is more information in the CAFR documents, in the management discussion and analysis. It does get pretty in the weeds, so if at any point you're reviewing any of this stuff and you want to send either myself or Eddie or both of us questions, we will certainly be happy to answer those. And I am happy to take any questions right now, if you have any. Thank you very much.
I think we all have to digest this and try to figure it out.
I know. New board, and we hit you right away with...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for any of our budget presenters? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for doing that. Now we'll move into our consent items. This will be consent items 1.1 through 3.7, with the exception of the two that we removed to amend the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the amended consent items 1.1 through 3.7, with the exception of 3.1 and 4.1?
Motion to approve.
Are there any question, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Is there any discussion that we need to have? Okay. Monica, can we have roll call, please? Oh, yes, sir.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to point out, for those who might be watching from home or something, the board may want to, and I'm happy to, if you like, to cover the highlights of the vacancy resolution.
Yes.
State the timelines and whatnot for the public.
Okay.
I can do that if you like, or...
Let me find it here. So we are declaring a board vacancy. We have a two-year seat that's up for, that's vacant, and we need to fill. So we would like interested persons to send a letter to the board with a statement of interest in qualifications by January 21st of the new year 2020. There are several things that we want in that letter, including educational background, knowledge of how a school district operates, knowledge of board duties, reason for interest in serving on the board, what contribution they can make to the board, community involvement and Adams 14 school district involvement, as well as a minimum of two letters of support with a maximum of five, including one from a business leader here in Commerce City and one from a civic leader. After we receive all those applications, the board will host a community forum for prospective candidates on January 28th, 2020, and officially appoint a candidate for the vacancy on February 11th, 2020. Any additional special meeting dates, we will have posted. We're not sure what that might look like, but there may be some additional dates to talk about those applications. It is our hope to, like I said, appoint a candidate on February 11th, 2020. The candidate must be a registered elector of and residing in the Adams 14 school district for at least the last 12 consecutive months, and the appointee will serve until the next regular biannual election in November 2021. If you have any questions, you can email Monica Avina, and she can assist you with that. So that's a little bit about what we're looking at. We're not sure what the community forum will look like, but we feel like the community needs to have a say or some kind of involvement in helping us to select this board person. So, thank you. So if there's no further discussion, we need a roll call. Monica, please.
Mrs. Hurtado?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Ms. Lovato?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Okay. So, let me look at my list here. If there's anybody who wants to share anything at this time, this would be the time to do Anybody want to share any comments?
No. It's been a busy week.
Yes. It has been. So, all right. At this time, then, we do have a need for an executive session under CRS 2464024B for legal advice. The board will conference with an attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific matters. May I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Roll call, Monica?
Mrs. Hurtado?
Aye.
Mrs. Lovato?
I'm sorry.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Ms. Lovato?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
So, I just want to wish everybody happy holidays and a great winter break, and hopefully you'll get refreshed and come back and start January up and ready to go. So we have no further business coming before this board on this evening, so after the executive session, we will be adjourned. So thank you so much for everybody coming tonight. Appreciate it.